Welcome, North Hampton County Council meeting. Mr. Corporal leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Sheff, Ms. Ski, can you please do the roll?
Mr. Brown. Mr. Corporal?
Here.
Mr. Giovanni?
Here.
Mr. Gafredo?
Here.
Mr. Heckman?
Here.
Mr. Kraft?
Here.
Ms. Vargo Heffner. Mr. Warren?
Here.
Mr. Brown, Ms. Keegan, and Ms. Vargo Heffner are absent.
Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the April 3, 2025, meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Kraft and Mr. Giovanni. Can I get, uh, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No courtesy of the floor. Does anybody want to speak to council for courtesy of the floor? No. Mr. Executive, do you have something?
Good evening, council. It's always a distinct pleasure to be here before you. My first item of business in my report is to call Maria Benzoni forward. Maria has recently retired from her service as the county's farmland administrator. And I want to present her with the certificate that you receive when you do retire from county service. But before I do that, I would like to frame for you Maria's service to the county because I think it has been vital and important and productive. And if our present is green, it's because Maria did what she did. During her time as administrator, Maria preserved 236 farms. That totals 15,120.74 acres. The money from North Hampton County that Maria utilized during this time period to do that was $25,319,631.33. But that leveraged $47,656,708.96 cents from the Commonwealth's funds for easement purchase. And it also leveraged another $3,879,635.20 from municipal funds for a total of $76,855,975.49. So I want to thank Maria for her service. I did some, I did some math today. Thirty-five percent of the farms that you worked on and preserved have been in the last eight years. Thirty-five percent of your time with the county. And so I personally very much appreciate that. As you know, we've always had an emphasis on farmland preservation as well as our other green agenda items like open space and environmentally sensitive land. And every year during budget time, we would have the conversation about how much money you needed for farmland preservation. And you're always like, oh, nope, you've given us enough. We're spending it as fast as we can. So it's a testament to your time here, and I would just like to take the opportunity to present you a certificate of appreciation. The county of North Hampton recognizes Maria Benzoni upon her retirement for 34 years of dedicated service to the county. April 17, 2025, Lamont G. McClure, county executive. Thank you very much.
It is a lot of money. It's a lot of responsibility as well. And that just touched on a small portion of what our division did over the years. Preserving the easements is a great opportunity and a great achievement for the county, but it is more about the partnerships that we forged, not only with the county, other county divisions, the landowners, our related agencies, but with the state staff, again, the other agencies. Through the program we facilitated, as Mr. McClure said, that was just a small portion of what we did. We also created that partnership program that brought that $3.8 million to the county. And other counties also saw that as a motivation to get their programs up and running, and we mentored those counties. We also were able to take in and facilitate the ACAP grant, which brought in another $1.1 million to the county to help assist our farmers. And just because the easement is done, doesn't mean the work is completed. The staff still has to facilitate the monitoring, the inspection, and the enforcement. So the program lives on far beyond just the initial easement. And it's a relationship that we built with these landowners by sitting at their kitchen tables and facilitating that trust with not just us, the staff, but with the government and the county as an agent. So it was a lot of work. It was a lot of investment of time and resources, but for me, it was a passion, and I love what I did. I would have liked to have done it for a few more years. But I'm proud of the legacy we created. I am very proud of the staff we have in place with Ryan and Claire and the mission we have. But that mission's not done yet. We still have a lot more work to do. And I hope that the county continues to back the division and back the staff so that this can continue on in the future.
Thank you. And on behalf of the council, thank you very much.
I ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
You said the easement, is that the match that the state would give if we put so much out?
Yes.
When we passed the thing in 1990, ensuring that there would be money from the county given to, to put forward, when they did open space and we wanted farms, and there was some resistance, but we pushed it through. I remember there was a certain percentage, and that program now is, that's finished. That's been finished?
No, that continues on.
Oh, okay.
The county will allocate a certain amount of money every year and every fiscal budget. That money gets pooled if there's other funds like the TIF from Route 33, if there is rollback interest from Act 319. All of that gets pooled together and gets sent up to the Commonwealth, and then it gets matched by a formula and comes back.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear, I wasn't shook. So they're still doing that.
They're still doing that.
Super. Thank you. Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you. Mr. Warren, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Gafredo. Just thank you so much for the work that you have done over all these years. And as we are living in a time where there is a time distrust with government entities, the work that you have done, the work that your coworkers have done, solidifies something that I have known within myself for a very long period of time, working in the realm of government and elected government as long as I have, that government can really be an instrument of good in various ways. And that, no, not all government is bad. That you talking to folks at their kitchen tables about how we can best preserve our land and our environment, it's, it's really incredible work. And I just wanted to emphasize that, that the, these are the, these are the moments that we're recognizing where government can be an instrument of good. And I think it's very important that, that we realize that, and thank you for being a part of that for so many years here in North Hampton County.
I appreciate that. It was 20, 23 years in the position.
Yeah.
And I forged a lot of relationships and a lot of friendships. So for me, it was part of the job. It was part of what you do is create that trust.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benzoni. Todd, do you want to come up?
So this week is Telecommunicators Week as well. And as we honor farmland preservation and the folks who do that, we ought to also honor the people who answer the phone when we call 911. Emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services. When emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and the preservation of property. The safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the North Hampton County Emergency Communication Center. Public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. Public safety telecommunications are the single vital link for our police officers, firefighters, and paramedics by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. Public safety telecommunications of the North Hampton County 911 Communication Center have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. Each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now, therefore, I, Lamont G. McClure, North Hampton County Executive, declare the week of April 13 through the 19, 2025, to National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in North Hampton County in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our county and citizens safe. North Hampton County, Pennsylvania, April 13 through the 19, 2025.
Todd, do you want to address the?
Thank you for recognizing my, my staff, the dispatchers that are there, the supervisors. It actually may be a great thing in a couple of weeks. I know it passed the House in the state of Pennsylvania that they are going to be recognized as the first first responders, and they're looking forward to pass the Senate. But these are the unsung heroes that really nobody knows their name. They know them by a number when they call, and they assist a lot of our residents probably at their worst moment and their worst time and get them through it and get those proper resources to them to help them. So I appreciate you recognizing my staff. Back in the day when I was in Gray, I used to answer the phone, and the job from now, from then to now has become a lot more challenging for these dispatchers. The change in technology, society, societal issues that are going on, they're dealing with. It is a challenging job. So thank you for recognizing our staff.
Thank you.
Thank you, Todd.
Elections report. To date, we have received 22,169 mail-in ballot applications. We have started the process of mailing ballots, and today we delivered approximately 4,000 ballots to the post office. We expect the mailed and the remainder of the ballots on Monday and Tuesday after the Easter holiday. Drop boxes will be in place at seven county locations on Monday, April 21. The drop box locations and times are posted on the Elections Division website. The locations are the Government Center in the Rotunda, the 911 Center, the Human Services Building, Bethlehem City Hall, East Allen Township Municipal Building, Washington Township Municipal Building, and NCC Fowler Center. On-demand balloting at the Elections Office will also begin on Monday, April 21, between the hours of 8:30 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. The full schedule is also posted on the Elections Division website. Hours will be Monday through Friday, 8:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and Saturdays, 9:00 a.m. to noon. The last day for ballot on-demand will be Tuesday, May 13, at 5:00 p.m. So, and finally, to conclude my report, last night at the Finance Committee meeting, we had discussion about the unaudited financial statements for the fourth quarter. And one of the concerns that was raised was that the unaudited, and by the way, in my view, the unaudited financial statements are not even worth the paper they're printed on because they change so dramatically. But we have them, they're there, we have the numbers. And at one point, there was a concern that we had $3,000 left at the end of 2024. And it, it made me, it made me cause Mr. Barron to find out some questions for me. The first question I asked him was, if we only had $3,000 at the end of 2024, how are we keeping the lights on, literally? So he being literal, went and got me the light bill. And so we paid our light bill on March 18, 2025. The light bill was $33,997.47, 43 cents, I'm sorry. So we had the $33,000 to pay the light bill, and we have the supporting documentation behind the $33,000 light bill to show that we can pay our bills. I then said, okay, you showed me that we paid a $33,000. By the way, we pay a lot for power. You showed me that we paid a $33,000 light bill. Are you sure we can pay the rest of our bills? I mean, after all, the unaudited financial statements at the end of 2024 said we only had $3,000 in the bank. So he said, well, look at this. In the last seven days, we paid $1,279,46.24 in bills. So I said, if we only had $3,000, how did we pay a mil, 1.2 million in bills? So then he had to go and show me the numbers of the money we currently have, right? And so last night, we heard about these CREM accounts, which are these sort of supercharged savings accounts that municipal governments can invest in. And in the CREM account today, our market value is $53,491,448.78, a good site, more than $3,000. But I said, okay, that's 53 million. This is a, you know, almost half a billion dollar government, our general fund as well in excess of 100 million. That can't be all the money we have. And so we have a common bank account as well. And I said, well, not, well, it can't be much in that. Well, apparently, as of today, there was $64,558,104.70 in the common account on top of the $53,491,000. I said, well, is that it? I mean, because wow, is that it? And he said, no, there's another $35,218,914.11. So as of today, we're liquid, if we really needed to be, at a tune of about $140 million. So there's two things I am raising this issue for. One is, it's completely irresponsible to let people believe we have $3,000 in the bank. It's just completely irresponsible to create that impression using unaudited numbers that aren't worth the paper they're printed on. The other thing is, we're about to go out to borrow money in the bond market, which has been volatile lately. And rhetoric like using unaudited financial statements to say we have $33,000 left and the, the county is not being properly financially and fiscally managed could cost us more money, despite the fact that we have nearly the highest bond rating that you can have. So, I mean, we can talk about unaudited finance numbers all night long, but here's what we got. So rest assured, people of North Hampton County, we can keep the lights on. Any questions?
Lots. Mr. McClure, I'm going to ask one question about Greystale because that's what we were talking about yesterday.
Sure.
Are we funding Greystale with money outside of Greystale in the tune of 15 to 20 million dollars to keep it going?
No.
So Greystale is self-supporting itself?
Well, yes.
Thank you very much.
Over the last several years, well, no, let me, let me, well, let me answer, Judge. Over, let me fully answer the question. Over the last several years, Greystale has received millions in American Rescue Funds, both from us, from our general fund, if you will, our allocation of American Rescue Funds, and from funds that were directly sent to Greystale for Greystale's own purposes. They had their own funds too. So yes, to get us through the pandemic, American Rescue Funds were absolutely used.
Pandemic's over, though. It's 2025, 2024. We seem to have drained about $20 million from our general fund and 15, I, I, I'm not going to use exact numbers because I don't have the audited version. But just following the balance sheet from 2023, which was audited, it sure seems like we're taking tens of millions of dollars and putting it into Greystale.
I think we are not, and we can have that full discussion after you get your audit from Meyer Dussel.
2023 is audited.
Your audit.
That's what it showed. So I don't think it's an outrageous thing to talk about, especially if you, the numbers you added up was about $200 million. At the rate that we're losing, that's about 10 years. That's a 10-year burn rate. That's something to talk about. So I don't think it's unreasonable for us to have that conversation, and I think that was a very worthwhile conversation to have yesterday.
I don't think that's a bad conversation to ever have.
Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you.
You mentioned, we're going to have the audit, the independent auditor. We, they do their job. We don't tell them what to do, but, or what to say, but you can stress to them, there's an area you're particularly concerned about because council hires them. And you'd say, look, when you're going over these books and figures, I, I'm, we're concerned as a body with the Greystale budget. Could you really dig down and look into that so that it'll put people's minds at ease?
We did. I believe Mr. Giovanni, Madam President, Mr. Spadoni sat down with the controller and went over areas of concern, areas to look into. If you, by all means, Mr. Heckman, if you'd like to add to that as well.
No, no, I just wanted to pass that on, that that's been forever, that council's.
Yes.
You're, you know, you're, not you, but we're hiring the, the people to look. And the other thing is, I've always been really concerned, I, I, not getting into all, we have a feedback loop that is driving me, is it driving anybody else crazy?
Figure it out.
Well, that may be one way to get to shut me up. But the thing is, I always like to look at our funds as what's encumbered and what isn't. I mean, I think, Mr., that, that's always been, now, I know people look into it more specifically, and God bless you for doing that. But, you know, for example, with Greystale, everybody knows my feelings about Greystale. I, I, I don't see it as something anymore. Times change, and when I was director.
Mr. McClure, can you please?
When I was director, we, times were changing. I had to bring in a consultant because they didn't want to change where they did business out of Greystale, but we couldn't do business the way we did. And I know they got really upset with me, but we had to change some of our procedures to increase our income. It just wasn't the eighties and the ni, early, and the nineties anymore. Times had changed. And frankly, it was good. You know, we were able to decertify beds. We, the state gave us a ton of money to decertify the beds. But when it came, comes to Greystale, and I, because I want people to have confidence in it, that the county has to come to the decision of whether they're going to keep Greystale or not, a, a long-term plan. What is the minimum, the minimum amount of people, residents that we can have or we will sustain? I don't think we, we're going to need 700 people. I don't, but we need, we need, there's a number we know that we're going to have to have like almost a break-even number. And I think going forward, and, and I, you know, not with the administration here, they've got their hands full just finishing the budget, but sometime, I think it'd behoove council and an administration to agree to put together a task force to, to really look at a long-term vision for Greystale, including the finance, what, what services they'll provide, what services they can't provide. I mean, we didn't do rehab services for years. That's a, that's a gold mine. And they, when we, I said, we're going to do rehab, they, they went like, oh my God, the world's ending. Well, because they were living in the past. I mean, we have to, from my perspective, getting Greystale solid ground is more important than anybody's pride. And so I didn't mind barbs over that. But I, I just, just a suggestion that, that, you know, bipartisan group, both BICOM or both groups get together, in fact, people not even in government, they should probably get some people who have experience. And just, it's not to say you've done this wrong, you've done that wrong. We got to put that aside because we have families that depend on that. It's a big thing. Major, major, major commitment on the county's part to, to say, okay, here we have what we think might work, what might not work, and then just have that. That's for the public, not for myself, not for the executive, not for the Republicans, not for the Democrats. But I'm just suggesting that as somebody who's standing on their last leg here and having, we used to say, fighting the Greystale wars, because, because there's a lot of people that just want it to go away. And I don't want it to go away. And I'm not going to just say, oh, it can never go away, because, yes, it can. And, and, and we have to be sure, and we have to have plans, and we have to continually, continually, continually review those plans. That's why I asked Mr. Barron about the, the, do we, in our general fund, now that all the money goes in for Greystale, do we have a specific line item or a revenue can where everything that could go to Greystale is so that when you look at the unencumbered funds, or you look at the cash balance that we have, he can say, with, look at a few keystrokes, this is money that is from Greystale, for Greystale, they just don't need it now, or we can't spend it now. So I just think that's essential going forward, and we can have, then you can have the debate on whether or not you want a nursing home, you don't want, my feelings are solid on that, but I do think it would behoove us all to, to have a very serious discussion on, on what it's going to take and how many people, how many staff you're going to need, and so on and so forth. And if we're going to keep it, then we're going to have to do whatever it takes to keep, to get the staff and do what we do.
I can't speak for everybody, but I know I'm labeled as one of the more conservative people on this council. I don't want to see Greystale go anywhere, but I think there's two misconceptions that A, people want to see it sold, and B, that it's always going to be here.
Absolutely.
Right? Like, if, if we can't afford the place and it runs us dry, we run out of options. So it's our duty to make sure it's fiscally sound.
That's why I'm sort of presenting what I'm presenting.
And when I'm looking at the spreadsheets, it leads me to believe that it's not. It's simply, if we're running 80% agency nurses, if we have 150 beds, 180 beds that are empty, and we are being told that it makes no difference, well, I feel like that's a fiscal impossibility. Obviously, we know agency nurses cost us much more money, and obviously, if beds aren't filled, we're getting less money revenue. So expenses are up, revenue is down, and 10 to 15 million dollars goes into that place every year, it seems. So yes, I think if we want to keep that nursing home in the county's hands, we need to take steps, as you said, whether it's hire a consult that is, you know, specializes in this, to work for council, to give us strategies, that might be a good avenue to take. But we need to do something, or else we will lose the nursing home.
I'd like to get a point of order. This isn't on the agenda. We're going into a whole new meeting about Greystale.
Having a conversation, is that all right?
When we get to the, yeah, no, it's not all right.
Thank you.
It's not on the agenda.
Mr. Heckman, anything else?
We've done that before.
Yeah, we've had conversations. I don't need a point of order.
This is why I don't use Robert's rule as a weapon. But may I finish?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. And that is that I agree, I don't want to see administrations beat up, but I've sat at the kitchen table myself and talked to people who said, well, my father wants to visit, she goes in, we need this because where will she go if they won't get into Greystale? And that creates difficulties for families. There, you'll, I always find a nursing home somewhere that'll take her, but maybe it's in another state. Maybe it's 50 miles away.
The county wants a nursing home. I think that's pretty obvious.
Yes, absolutely, it's obvious. And that is why we have to work hard, not that we haven't, but maybe we have to work even harder to figure out what it's going to take.
I think we need to look at it from a different perspective. I think we need to change the way we look at it, but I think we talked about it enough.
And I apologize for, for upsetting Mr. Kraft. I was going to get into the hot dog debate, but I'm not going to do that.
You got to say it one more time. Get your case a-ha.
No, 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 I'll wait for the right time.
All right.
Old business. Public hearing of an ordinance entitled, "In ordinance of the County Council of North Hampton County authorizing the conveyance of a deed of easement, East Bull's Head Road right-of-way, Willowbrook Road right-of-way, containing 4,864.75 square foot right-of-way easement, more or less as determined by survey of real property by the county in North Hampton and Township of Allen, Pennsylvania to the Township of Allen." Mr. Warren and Ms. Vargo Heffner introduced this ordinance at the April 3 meeting. Is there any questions from the public or comments? Any discussion on council? Call for a vote.
Mr. Warren?
Aye. Or yes, sorry. I don't know.
For Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Corporal?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of seven to zero.
Supervisor days there, sorry.
Is there any other? Is there any other old business to discuss? Moving on to new business. Consideration of an Executive's amended appointment resolution, Lehigh North Hampton Airport Authority. Mr. Giovanni, can you introduce the resolution?
Yes. Resolved by North Hampton County Council that the term of the following confirmed individual shall be amended as indicated hereafter. Lehigh North Hampton Airport Authority Appointment, Kevin Lott, Heller Town, PA 18055. Term to expire 12/31/29. I believe the amendment was because the year was wrong of his term.
The year was wrong in the original appointment? Any other discussion? Call for a vote.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Mr. Corporah?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of six to one.
Consideration of a personnel request resolution, Department of Human Services, Mental Health, Early Intervention Developmental Programs. Mr. Giovanni, can you introduce the resolution?
Yes. It is hereby resolved by North Hampton County Council that the position of, one, full-time clerical supervisor, two, pay grade HS-gr33, salary $42,704. In the Department of Human Services, Mental Health slash Early Intervention slash Development Program shall be downgraded to the position of, one, full-time clerk typist III, per grade HS-gr30, salary $37,421, effect of April 18th, 2025.
Call for a vote.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Corporah?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of seven to zero.
Consideration of a tree donation resolution... Oh, I'm sorry, consideration of a conifer garden resolution. Mr. Warren, could you introduce the resolution?
Yes, Mr. Gafredo. Whereas North Hampton County Home Rule Charter, Section 20210, provides that county council shall have, amongst others, the following powers, quote, "to accept on behalf of the county any gifts of real property and to provide for the acceptance by any agency on behalf of the county of other gifts." And whereas Mr. and Mrs. Robert Syke requested to donate approximately 150 conifer plants with an estimated value of $5,100 to be used for the development of a conifer garden within the Louise W. Moore Park arbit... Oh, my gosh. Optorium, holy cow. Now therefore, be it resolved by the North Hampton County Council that it does hereby authorize the county executive to accept on behalf of the Division of Parks and Recreation the donation of the plants with an estimated value of $5,100.
Mr. Kope was in here earlier explaining that they're being donated because farmers are getting older and can't take care of them anymore. It seems like a great, great thing for the county.
Great project.
Any other discussion?
Well, just that we really appreciate the donations like these and keep them coming.
Absolutely. Call for a vote.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Corporah?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of seven to zero.
Consideration of a tree donation resolution. Oh, yeah, Mr. Warren, please introduce the resolution.
Whereas North Hampton County Home Rule Charter, Section 20210, provides that the county council shall have, amongst others, the following powers, quote, "to accept on behalf of the county any gifts of real property and to provide for the acceptance by any agency on behalf of the county of other gifts." And whereas Erie Insurance, as part of its 100th anniversary, has requested to donate 100 trees with an estimated value of $4,500 to the Wildlands Conservancy to be planted within the Wayne A. Group Memorial Park. Now therefore, be it resolved by the North Hampton County Council that it does hereby authorize the county executive to accept on behalf of the Division of Parks and Recreation the donation of 100 trees with an estimated value of $4,500.
Discussion? Call for a vote.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Corporah?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of seven to zero.
Consideration of Administrative Code, Article 13, Contract Resolutions, Two-Way Communications, EMS, Intide, Next Generation Voice Logging Recorder Systems. Mr. Brown, can you introduce the resolution?
Whereas North Hampton County Administrative Code, Article 13, Procurement and Disposition of County Property, Section 13.15, Contracts and Agreements, C2, requires approval of county council for any contracts where costs are to be funded with monies outside of the county's general fund, such as those funded through bonded indebtedness. And whereas on April 7, 2025, the North Hampton County Council received a request from the county executive for county council to adopt a resolution endorsing a contract with two-way communications to install, maintain, and upgrade a regional event tied next generation voice logging recorder system for the joint operation between Lehigh County and North Hampton County EMS following installation of new equipment. Price includes 12 months of event tied support and first year of maintenance with a total cost of $458,350.75 funded with the Pima Act 12 grant. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved that North Hampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendation of the county executive set forth in the attached documentation to approve the contract with two-way communications.
Mr. Weaver's here. If anybody has any questions, any discussion? Call for a vote.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Corporah?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of seven to zero.
Next up, the two-way communications EMS Novus Dispatch Upgrade. Mr. Brown?
Whereas on April 7, 2025, North Hampton County Council received a request from the county executive for county council to adopt a resolution endorsing a contract with two-way communications to upgrade the Lehigh Valley Region's joint operations between Lehigh County 911 and NCM, Zetron, Akam, Novus Dispatch Console, including all hardware equipment, software licensing, professional services, and ongoing support services needed to ensure a successful deployment of the upgraded project through June 30th, 2026, with a total cost of $857,582.76 funded with the Pima Act 12 grant. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved that the North Hampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendation of the county executive as set forth in the attached documentation to approve the contract with two-way communications.
Discussion? Call for a vote.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Corporah?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of seven to zero.
Is there any other new business to discuss? Council committee reports? Mr. Warren?
Thank you, Mr. Gafredo. The Energy, Environment, and Land Use Committee met today.